Good morning and welcome to the Los Angeles City Council. Today is Tuesday, April 18th, 2006. We are here in City Council chambers, Room 340 of City Hall in the John F. R. Council chambers. We invite members of the public to come down here directly or to testify via remote through our Van Nuys City Hall facilities where we know there are somebody there today waiting to testify for public comment, but we invite people to speak at our general public comment or for items that have been agendized for public comment here each Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. We also have council ambassadors in the back for when people come here and are unsure about some of the mechanisms of the council to be able to explain those. We also broadcast live on Channel 35, LA City View, your city channel, and rebroadcast in the evening. For those not by TV, they can use their computers to access a live streaming webcast of this meeting at www.lacity.org where there's a wealth of information about your elected officials, the committees of the City Council, and the various city departments and agencies that affect your life. We also have council phone, which is where you can call in and listen to the proceedings of the full City Council or the committees of the City Council, and that number is 213-621-CITY. I want to thank the members who are here right now. It's about 10:06, and council members Grul, Weezer, Padilla, Rosendahl, Wesson, Zine, and myself, Garcetti, are here. I would like to invite council member, let's see, Parks to come down, council member Perry, council member Weiss, council member Hahn, and as soon as we have 10 members, we will have a quorum, two-thirds of our members. We have a number of members who are excused for city business or who are out sick, so we just have basic 10 members. As soon as we have those, we will begin our meeting. Thank you. Again, I want to thank council members Grul, Weezer, Padilla, Rosendahl, Wesson, and Zine for being here, and would ask again if council members Hahn, council member Parks, council member Perry, council member Smith, no, sorry, council member Smith is excused, and council member Weiss, if you can please make your way as soon as possible to council chambers. If we don't have a quorum in about five minutes, we will adjourn. Thank you, Ms. Hahn. We now have Ms. Grul, Ms. Hahn, Mr. Weezer, Mr. Padilla, Mr. Rosendahl, Mr. Wesson, and Mr. Zine present. We still are awaiting two more council members, council members Parks and Perry. If we don't have them in the next three minutes, we will adjourn. It's now 10:14. Council members Grul, Hahn, Weezer, Padilla, Rosendahl, Wesson, Zine are here. If council members Parks and Perry can't make it down, the next minute we will adjourn. We have one item which we do have to hear today because of time limit, otherwise we would be adjourned. Just a friendly reminder, our meeting time is 10 o'clock, and under our own council rules, we are supposed to be in our seats at 10 o'clock for each meeting. I'll make an exception today because of this one matter that is timed, otherwise we would be adjourned. Our 10th member is about a block away, and we will begin the meeting as soon as she arrives. Okay, we have 10 members. Please call the clerk, madam, call the role, Madam Clerk. Thank you.
Cardiness Grul, Hahn, Weezer, Labange, Padilla, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, 10 members present in the quorum, Mr. President.
Okay, first order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Wesson moves, and Mr. Padilla seconds. If there's no objection, that's unanimously approved, so ordered.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Parks is the mover, and Mr. Padilla seconds. If there's no objection unanimously approved, so ordered.
And, Mr. President, this is Tuesday, and there is a flag salute.
Okay. I can please ask everybody in council chambers to rise, and Mr. Rosendahl, if you'd be kind enough, maybe from the podium right there, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the City Council meeting. And put your right hand over your heart and start with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rosendahl. Next order of business, please.
Mr. President, this is the time for comments from the public on items not on council's agenda.
Okay. As is customary, the City Council takes public comments on items that are in our jurisdiction but are not agendized. I'd like to go to Van Nuys first, if we may, where we have Charlotte Laws waiting there. Ms. Laws, I know we don't have a timer there, but we will remind you of the time. You have two minutes, and thank you for coming to Van Nuys City Hall to testify via remote.
Thank you. My name is Dr. Charlotte Laws. I am president of the Directors of Animal Welfare, or DAW program. I'm going to speak briefly about the elephant issue. The Dawes urge you to close the elephant exhibit permanently and to send Gita, Ruby, and Billy to a sanctuary. I am dismayed by the vote of the Joint Committee last week, but want to take this moment to thank council member Rosendahl for his lone ethical vote. A number of neighborhood councils plan to vote on the elephant issue at their upcoming board meetings. I feel you should listen to the councils and stakeholders in your districts before making a rash decision. Everyone knows that elephants need space. Confining these large and beautiful creatures in a 3.7 acre enclosure is like trying to raise a child in a suitcase. It amounts to ongoing cruelty and systematic abuse. What are we teaching our children when we take them to visit unhappy elephants living in intolerable conditions? We convey the wrong message. Elephants are not objects to be propped up on display. They are beings with innate value deserving of happiness. Los Angeles has a budget deficit of $270 million. It is irresponsible to spend $39 million of money that we do not have in this way. In addition, the proposed exhibit will become defunct when Assemblyman Lloyd Levine's elephant bill passes. The state will order you to close the new facility. Please do the right thing for these deserving and beautiful creatures. They are counting on you. And please do the right thing for Los Angeles taxpayers. We are likewise counting on you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Laws. We appreciate your testimony here in City Hall. I'd like to invite Michael Hunt forward first, and then Sochi Luhon, and Louise Hay. Those will be our first three speakers. Welcome to City Hall. You have two minutes. Thank you.
Good morning, City Hall. My name is Michael Hunt. I'm a Venice Beach vendor. This week, we lost a good soldier in Venice Beach, stress-related death. His name was Cecil McGee. He helped the community in several different ways. He cleaned up the city of Venice and helped people with drug rehabilitation. He's a good soldier. I'd like to pay tribute to him. I'd like to take a minute of silence in thanking for all the kindness and goodness he did. Bill, you got to fix the 4215. Thank you, Michael Hunt.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. Sochi Luhon is our next speaker, and then Louise Hay will be after Ms. Luhon, and then Michael Carrion will be on deck from there. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Sochi Luhon. I am representative of the Chicana and Chicano Studies Alumni Association at California State University Dominguez Hills. And last week, a young 13-year-old girl came before the council and testified to the council of an incident that occurred at the South Central Farm, where she had someone brandish a gun at her and pointed at her. Unfortunately, councilperson Zine was not here to hear her testimony. He was not, he was present at the meeting, but he was not sitting in his seat to be able to hear this young lady, who courageously, might I add, came up and approached the council and one of the persons who was present when that incident happened. So I applaud her for her courage and integrity and always coming to these meetings asking for the city council's help with her family in support of the South Central Farm. Secondly, a lot of my words were utilized against me and the farmers in the sense that the term harassment and intimidation were utilized. And let me be very clear about harassment, because the farmers have been going through harassment for the past three years. Helicopters have encircled the farm. They practically landed at the farm, hovered over the farm while there are other people who are visiting the farm taking tours were present. So there are many that can attest to these, you know, types of intimidation tactics. Police officers have encircled the farms and flashed their spotlights at the farmers in the farm. People have been followed by police cars around the farm. So that's harassment. Intimidation would come under the context of what happened to that young 13-year-old girl having a weapon brandished at her. So if you want to talk about harassment and intimidation, believe me, I can attest to that as well. Please support the South Central Farmers. Help them with this issue that is happening, and I'm glad to hear that. An investigation is pending, the incident that took place on Tuesday. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Luhon. Our next speaker is Louise Hay, and then Michael Carrion, to be followed by Melise Goodman.
Good morning.
Marlene, excuse me, not Melise.
Good morning. My name is Louise Hay. I'm 25. I'm a law student. I oppose the proposed expansion of the elephant exhibit at LA Zoo for three reasons. Firstly, the expansion will be redundant, as the enclosures will still be ludicrously inadequate. I volunteered in Zambia for six months and was fortunate enough to live among two herds of elephants who lived free in the Insumbu National Park. They are gloriously sensitive, intuitive, and intelligent animals who roam many thousands of miles in their 70-year lifespans. To consider that Billy, Gita, and Ruby will not roam more than one quarter an acre and will not live more than 20 or so years is beyond saddening. It is cruel and unusual punishment. Secondly, PAUZ, a sanctuary in Northern California, is ready and pleased to take these elephants in, to give them the freedom of a habitat in which to roam as they would in their natural environment. Third, the city is running at a deficit, and this money would better serve improving roads, improving schools for our children, and improving the lives of our thousands of homeless. To waste this money on promoting the enslavement of animals in appropriate enclosures is wrong. It's unjust, and it's illogical. I implore you to please vote against it. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Michael Carrion, and then Marlene Goodman.
My name is Michael Carrion, and I'm from the 14th District. And I apologize, Mr. Weezer, but I didn't hear you last week or when I spoke. And just to clarify something, as of today, I haven't heard from your office. I barely heard from him this morning. This goes to show you how much your office calls back. Mr. Reyes is not here, but I brought this to his attention last week, three weeks ago. Since January, we haven't got any graffiti off of swimming pool. Mr. Smith last week was stating that on the lighting issue, that everybody was talking about the letter of the law and not the spirit of the law. Yet, when I brought an issue of a tree falling on a car, he stuck to the letter of the law and not the spirit of the law. Either there's a lot of hypocrisy going on here, or there's a lot of flip-flopping going on here, or, as the mayor says, it, changing of minds. Mr. Zine, I was home and I watched you on TV attack the South Central Farmers. You stated that you did not draw your weapon. You did not state whether one of the other officers drew his. You stated that a vehicle pulled up on you. You did not state whether you were in a marked black-and-white vehicle that said Los Angeles Police on there. You also went on for approximately three and a half minutes without the president or without the city attorney explaining to you the Brown Act, which I was told by the district attorney, you can only respond with a few words. But you went on and on and on. When there's important issues on the table other than backing yourself up or taking your side, why don't you speak up on them? When somebody asks questions, why doesn't everybody else speak up? But when it's to defend yourself, you can ignore the Brown Act and go on and on and on to say what you have to say. Either we have the Brown Act or we don't have the Brown Act. Mr. President, I think it's your job to enforce that. If somebody's speaking over there a lot at time, you turn them off with this little beep, but when the councilmen are speaking, breaking the law...
Thank you very much.
You don't say nothing.
Ms. Marlene Goodman is next, and then Karen Bonadillo and Catherine Doyle.
My name is Marlene Goodman. I am a Director of Animal Welfare for the Sherman Oaks Neighborhood Council, and I'm particularly addressing my comments today to councilmember Grul and councilmember Weiss. I want to let them know that last night, the Sherman Oaks Neighborhood Council voted to oppose the elephant exhibit at the zoo. I think it's very important that they take note of that. They voted with the New York, with, excuse me, with the Los Angeles Times and with the Daily News. They seem to represent the major output of the community, and it's crazy to me that nobody here really listens to that. I hope that not everybody is just taking care of their own individual needs, but will think of the elephants too, because they don't have a voice, and I thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Goodman. Karen Bonadillo and Catherine Doyle, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. I love how you pronounce my name so perfectly now. Both the LA Times and the Daily News have come out and have said that they oppose the LA Zoo expansion of the elephant exhibit. So for the record, I'm here to read the LA Times article. "The Elephant in the Budget, April 17th, 2006." Don't even think of continuing to confine the Los Angeles Zoo's three elephants in their two tiny half-acre pen. Even a three-and-a-half acre enclosure, which the city council will vote on financing this week, amounts to an overcrowded dorm room for animals that need a more expansive space to thrive. Private fundraising and an already-approved zoo bond would pay half of the $39 million cost, but the rest would come from an existing park improvement bond kitty that could instead be put toward badly-needed park improvements for humans, plus a loan that would cost the city $1 million a year to service. That's a lot, especially with the mayor planning to raise fees and scour the budget for fat to trim in order to hire more police and eliminate a mounting structural deficit. Even so, the expense could be worth considering if it resulted in a place where the city's largest animals could live in a reasonable amount of comfort and safety, and if the zoo's collection left visitors with both a new understanding of how the creatures live in the world and a visceral awareness of how truly endangered they have become. But times have changed. There once may have been some educational value in pinning in elephants for people to see up close, even if it meant misery for the huge creatures. Today, though, we have learned enough about pachyderms and their habitat to know that they need bigger spaces to range, congregate, and eat. New sanctuaries are being created, not just to enhance the animal's own comfort, but to better educate adults and school children about how much land one elephant needs.
Thank you, Ms. Bonadillo. I'm sorry to cut you off. We have to be as precise as we can about that. Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Catherine Doyle is our last speaker.
Good morning. I'd like to know just who in the city actually supports spending more than $40 million. It's actually, we'll start off with debt service at about $47 million for an elephant exhibit, for one animal exhibit at the zoo. If you ask a person on the street, a taxpayer, that person will oppose it just out of common sense. The two largest newspapers in Los Angeles both have written very strong editorials in opposition. This is not a good investment of taxpayer funds, and it does not put Los Angeles in the forefront with other zoos and in the current management of elephants. 26 years ago, North Carolina Zoo built a three-acre exhibit. They are now doubling the size of that exhibit. A three-acre exhibit is now outdated. The National Zoo rejected a 2.6-acre exhibit in favor now of an eight-acre exhibit, and some elephants will be sent to 250 acres at their Front Royal facility. The Pittsburgh Zoo is in the process of creating a 150-acre preserve for elephants. So you can see, a 3.5-acre elephant exhibit comes nowhere close. Even zoos like Birmingham Zoo in Alabama is looking at 20 to 30 acres. We are far behind the times. It's just ingenuous to say that the proposed plan is based on doing what's best for the elephants, especially when two of the elephants, Gita, will be dead by the time it's built, and Ruby is an African elephant who will not belong in an Asian elephant exhibit. So if this elephant is not good for elephants and not good for taxpayers, just who is it good for? And lastly, I'd like to say that people will not stop going to the zoo if there are no elephants there. San Francisco and Detroit Zoos both showed no change in donors or membership due to having closed their elephant exhibits. Their attendance did not change. People go to the zoo for a fun day out with their families. It's not going to change just because there are no elephants there, or that they would have to go maybe a little bit further to a larger preserve that would be well worth than... bit further to a larger preserve, that would be well worth than spending the money on. Thank you, and I'm asking you to vote no on a 3.5-acre expansion tomorrow.
Thank you very much. Thank you to everybody for their public comments today. That closes our general public comment. Madam Clerk, next order of business, please.
Before beginning the regular agenda, Mr. President, on item number fifty, there is a request to continue that matter for one day, and that would be April 19th.
So that's item fifty, five-zero?
Yes.
Fifteen. Okay, is there any objection, colleagues, to continuing that? If not, that will be continued one day. Thank you. Next items?
Item number one is an item notice for public hearing, and the Bureau of Street Lighting is requesting that matter be received and filed.
Okay. Anybody wishing to hear that? Call that special. If not, let's open the roll and receiving and filing, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Okay.
That will be received and filed. Next items?
Next items on the agenda are also public hearing items, items two through five, and the recommendation for council action would be to continue, open the hearings, and to continue the hearing and ordinances until May 9th.
Okay. Nobody wishes to be heard on that? Let's open the hearings on those, and continue those till May 9th. There's no objection. So ordered. Next items?
Next items are items for which public hearings have been held, items six through twenty-five. On item number seventeen, the correct report has been distributed to the council. On number twenty, there is an amendment that is in the process of being signed and distributed to the council, and also on item twenty-five, there are two reports on the file, and a motion is required.
Okay. Mister twenty, on number twenty-five, Mr. Parks.
And also on number fifteen, not to redirect it, but we'd like a copy of that report to go to the newly-formed Ad-Hoc Committee on Financing, Bond Financing. But just to send that report.
Sure. We'll just, we'll send the report once the action is done?
Yes.
Okay. We'll make sure that that's done administratively on fifteen. Any specials, colleagues? Ms. Hahn, and Ms. Gruehl?
Number eleven.
Eleven, Ms. Hahn, Ms. Gruehl?
Nineteen and twenty-two.
Nineteen and twenty-two. Any other special items, colleagues? Thirteen, Mr. Padilla? Any other specials, colleagues?
And, Mr. President, on item number twenty, the amending motion has not been distributed yet. So do you wish to hold that on the desk?
We'll hold that on the desk, then, as well, okay? If there's no other specials on the balance, Madam Clerk, can please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those are approved.
And the ordinance on item number six goes over for one week.
Correct. Next items?
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held, items twenty-six through fifty-five, ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay. Colleagues, twenty-six through forty-nine right now, and then fifty-one and fifty-five. Specials, Mr. Padilla?
I was gonna ask item thirty-seven to be called special, but I see Mr. Smith isn't here, so I'm wondering if a continuance might be in order.
Yeah, we're looking on that. Why don't we hold that on the desk? Because I know, as the maker of the motion, he's not here, we could continue that for a day. But let's hold on the table, in the meantime. Other specials, colleagues? Okay. If not, do we have any speaker cards? I think for thirty-seven, we do have speaker cards, but we're gonna hold that on the desk anyways, right now. If there's no other ones, let's open and close the public hearings for these items. And on the balance, please prepare the roll, Madam Clerk, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those are approved. The ordinances will carry over for one week. Next items?
Next item is item number fifty-six, and that is a closed session. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Yes, let's hold item fifty-six on the desk for closed session.
And then that would take council back to the items called special. Item number eleven was called special by Councilmember Hahn.
Councilmember Hahn, we have item eleven for us.
Colleagues, what we have here is an issue that was, I think, probably new to a lot of us, because I think it's one of the first times the City of LA has done it, and it's called escheatment. And when someone owns one of our bonds, and it matures, the city then will notify the bondholder that it's their time to cash it in. But our policy was that we pretty much notified people through the Daily Journal, which most people probably don't read. And the last time we did this, we actually swept about nine million into our general fund, which, you know, on brush, looks like we got some money, and a lot of cities do that, when people's bonds mature. If they don't cash them in, then municipalities will sweep them into their general fund to balance their budget. So we got about 900 million, and of that, about 300,000 was protested, including a constituent from my district, who had a $5,000 DWP bond, which she had held, and had matured in 1997. She kept it in a safety deposit box, never once read the Daily Journal, has had the same address for 30 years, has had the same bank for 30 years, and was confused as why we couldn't have figured out a better way to notify her that her bonds had matured. So she had come to me, I brought it to the attention of our city treasurer, and our city treasurer pretty much recommended to us, the city council, that, you know, the only people who should have their money returned to them during this process were those with hardship claims, such as a blind person who could not have read the notice in the paper. I thought that was a little harsh, particularly since I think most people don't read the Daily Journal. So what we have before us today is a motion that I introduced, to have a report back from our city treasurer, on the process of how we do this in the City of Los Angeles. How do we notify people? What's the process? When someone disputes this, and is asking for their money back, you know, how do we go about it? And I also think, I wasn't, once I did my own research and figured out how we did it, what I'm hoping for is more than just a report back on how we do business as usual in this event. But I think we need to change the process. I think I would like to get back some recommendations on how we might do it better, better ways of notifying people, you know, particularly for our utility bonds. You know, people who buy utility bonds, bought them to be good citizens, to help out the city. They were safe. Utility bonds have always been held by seniors, widows, people who really were trying to invest in a safe security, and wanting to help out the City of Los Angeles, to only find that if, you know, years later, we made one notification in the Daily Journal, and then swept their money into our general fund. I think it's a process that hurts the average bondholder, particularly the kind of bondholder that would buy a DWP bond. And so I'm asking for a report back on how we do this, but I'm more interested in how we can do it better. Are we really using every means we can to notify somebody? I don't understand why we don't notify somebody by mail. I mean, especially, the person that came to me had the same address for 30 years. I was able to get her money back through this process, because I really fought for her, and I felt like it was an unfair process, but there are lots of other people in the City of Los Angeles and elsewhere, who have bought our bonds, thought they were safe security, kept them in a security deposit box, only to find out later that we took those funds and swept them in our general fund with very little warning or notice. So, and I don't know if you'd like to comment on that.
Yes, Councilmember, Joya Defor, city treasurer, with me, Beverly Cook and Noreen Vincent from city attorney's office.
We can't hear you.
With me, I have Noreen Vincent and Beverly Cook from city attorney's office, who will help me with some of the legalities. Just for clarification, notifications are given in accordance with state law, so advertise twice. I would agree, and part of my recommendation coming back is that this city council approve an additional appropriation to the city clerk, who actually does all the public notifications for the city, for anything from treasury that requires public notification. Ideally, I'd recommend the LA Times in this area. As a further clarification, I worked with city attorney, and we found that there was a contractual obligation to honor the claims, the majority of them. We had total claims in the amount of approximately 467,000. We have honored claims in the amount of 454,000. Everything that is remaining is because the bondholders have not brought in their coupons, which are negotiable. We have written them letters, and told them, as soon as you bring in the coupons, we can honor the rest of your claim.
So your first report back, that you would only recommend that we honor those who were blind...
Well, that wasn't quite my report, Councilmember. What I was recommending, based on...
Well, you did not recommend that we get up to 400,000.
That was correct, based on the initial determination made by the city attorney. If you will recall, in 2002, all the departments were challenged to find new and different ways to aid the general fund, so we could hire police officers.
People's bond money.
And what happened was, in accordance with how the process occurs in other cities, I worked with city attorney. I now have a different opinion, and I think a more detailed opinion from city attorney, and they've been very helpful. The reason why you don't have your written report now, we got the determination from city attorney in mid-February. We've been concentrating on getting these funds to the people who had filed the claim, so we could clear our backlog. I am anticipating being able to submit the formal report and improved recommendations to the city clerk in less than two weeks. It is drafted. I just need city attorney to review it, to make sure it is correct.
Well, you know, I will tell you, and I'll let the city attorney, if you want to say something, I will tell you, I'm very pleased that you've had a change of heart here, because, colleagues, naturally, we're always trying to find ways to help our general fund, but in my opinion, this was absolutely, really, not a very moral way to do it, to, you know, sweep people's bond money into our general fund. I realize it's legal, I realize other cities do it, but again, the spirit of a law versus a letter of law, I think is important here. And while the state tells us that we have to notify twice in some publication, I think the spirit is obviously to make sure we do everything we can to notify people when their bonds mature, and that, in fact, they have a certain amount of time before we do take it in the general fund.
And Councilmember, I would agree, but I also know treasurers who get in trouble for not following the legal letter of the law, and I really commend city attorney for helping me to work out a solution.
Well, I think you can spend, the legal letter of the law said you had to notify in a Daily Journal, twice. Okay, well, then you go beyond that. You don't get rid of that, but you go beyond to either try to contact them at their home address, or, again, if they're a DWP customer, we certainly know where they live.
Yeah, and...
I'm not saying you don't have to keep up the letter of the law by notifying it twice in some journal, but that's the bare minimum we should be doing.
And city councilperson, just so you understand, some of these were bearer bonds, there were no names, there were no addresses.
Right, but the one I had, she lived in the same address for 30 years.
Understand.
Does anybody else want to add to this? All right, well, I appreciate your formal report, it sounds like you've had a new vision about this, and I appreciate this, and I think all those who have purchased bonds in good faith with the City of Los Angeles will appreciate this policy.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Our next speaker is Mr. Zein, to be followed by Mr. Parks. Mr. Zein.
Yeah, I want to commend Janice Hahn for bringing this to our attention. I was unaware that this was even the case, that we would basically sell the bond, and then publish it in the Daily, as a Daily Journal you mentioned? And I don't know how many folks here read the Daily Journal.
And just to be clear, I don't do the publishing, these were the choices available to the city clerk, which is why I'm making a recommendation that more funding be provided, so we can put it in a more widely distributed publication.
Well, we still have thousands of dollars of bonds outstanding, correct?
That's correct.
And the current policy is to make the publication in the Daily Journal one or two times. You have an idea for a new process, but it has not been implemented yet.
Well, just to be clear, most of the bonds now are DTC-registered. These, the majority of these bonds went back to the 40s, 50s, and 60s, where it was actually a paper registration. The problem is diminished naturally, because the city now issues the majority of its bonds and registers them through the DTC, which keeps track of a bondholder's name and address and social security numbers.
So, current bonds that are sold, because I know there's a movement to sell additional bonds for different projects, we won't have this problem. And when did we change this process on the registration of the bonds? Can you hold my time, please, Mr. President?
Councilmember, I'm not sure. I know it happened shortly before I came to the city, and I came in 2001. Again, the bonds that we dealt with in 2002 were primarily from the 40s, 50s, 60s, and some 70s.
And how much do we think has been, over the years, swept in that hasn't been claimed by the rightful owners? Do we have a number, an approximate?
Well, when we did, it had never been done by the city at all until 2002.
What had never been done?
They sweeping the funds to the general fund.
Oh, they just stayed, they remained?
They just stayed and remained.
Okay. So, in 2001, we swept them?
2002, yes.
2002, we swept them. If an individual now is aware that the bond was called, but for whatever reason, they put it in a safe deposit box, they put it in a safe, whatever, and this triggers in their mind, I have a bond, how would they then go about, with the City of Los Angeles, to redeem that?
They would contact the city treasurer's office. The city attorney has gone through each of the issues, except for two that are pending, and determined that there is a contractual obligation to pay.
So we will pay them if they contact us?
Absolutely.
Okay. And how many people, or maybe that's, how many bonds do we have that fall in that category?
That I'd have to get back with you. I have them more by series, and I have the individuals that have been paid and filed claims.
Are we talking hundreds, or are we talking thousands of bonds?
We're talking, I'd say, less than 50, 60?
Less than 50 or 60, dating back to...
That are remaining, or from the beginning?
Well, from the beginning. In other words, someone is 70 years old, or 80 years old, and the bond has been sitting for a number of years. I'd like to know how many of those bonds are still outstanding, and how we can do public notice, and everyone who bought that bond with the good intention of redeeming that someday, and Ms. Hahn is taking care of one resident in San Pedro, but there may be hundreds of residents who have that, or they're next of kin, who come across something and says, my goodness, what do I do with this? Because out of righteousness and out of good conscience, they bought that bond, we used that money, and we owe them the dollars that are earned, if it's the individual or the next of kin. And my concern is, how do we then determine all those individuals? How do we make public notice? Because we're talking maybe thousands of people who have this income that is sitting there, and rightfully belongs to them. My concern is that Ms. Hahn identified one, how many others are out there? How many bonds do we still have that haven't been redeemed? That's my concern. How many thousands of people, or hundreds of people?
And I'll have to get the exact number for you, but we did keep a register, and when it was advertised, it was advertised by bond issue, and perhaps city attorney can help me here.
Good morning, Councilmember. I just, I guess, want to sort of piggyback on what the treasurer has indicated to you. My understanding, and hopefully the treasurer can correct me if I'm wrong, is that the city, over a period of time, has eschated approximately, is it nine million?
Nine million.
Nine million dollars.
Has been swept.
That has been swept, and I believe that it was done over a period of time. There was an ordinance that was adopted by the city about three, four years ago now, that basically authorized the city to eschate funds in accordance with provisions in state law.
I agree.
Since 2003. Since that time, the city has, on various occasions, eschated the money.
So we swept the funds in...
Your time has expired, Mr. Zein.
But the notification, people hasn't really been forthcoming.
Well, I think if I understand the facts as they were presented to us, is that many of the bonds that we were talking about, those bonds that were swept into the general fund, were bearer bonds, for which the city may not have had, or did not have, an address. And that problem has been remedied, given, well, those were the facts presented to us, because when the bearer bonds are actually purchased, the city doesn't have a registered address. So the way in which you notify is through the publication, and the city clerk's office, I believe, probably has contracts with various publications, or has established relationships with various publications.
Well, can I just close, I don't want to use it more time, I just want to say that we have reporters here from the Los Angeles Times, the Daily News. I think a story in one of the metropolitan papers is gonna do a whole lot more than publication in the Daily Journal, because people read our local metropolitan papers. At least, they should be reading Steve Hyman's column in the Los Angeles Times, and Rick Allos. I think that may be our public notice, at least we can take care of these people. I'm gonna conclude, because we've got nine million dollars that we owe people.
Thank you, Mr. Zein. We'll attach a little sign to the webcam of the fish that Mr. Hyman has. We'll attach a little sign to the webcam of the fish that Mr. Hyman has.
I think if I can just also add on to that, that our office did issue an opinion on this, which was transmitted to committee, and I believe forwarded on to council, and that the basis on which we were able to find we could reimburse some of the individuals who had come forward was that if there were a legal or contractual obligation to reimburse, that we would do so. In the case of the DWP bonds in particular, there was language in the resolution adopted by the DWP board, which basically constituted an ongoing obligation. So, what we said in our letter was that those bonds issued under those DWP resolutions should be reimbursed, and that, to the extent that additional claims come in, that we would look at them on a case-by-case basis.
Thank you. Mr. Parks is next, to be followed by Ms. Ruhl, also for a first time, and Ms. Hahn for a second time.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just need you to clarify one thing. It's the first time I've heard the issue by contract. Do we have bonds that do not have a similar contract that we'd be concerned with?
I have not had a chance to look at any of the other issues that were done through the city departments, not counting the proprietaries. So, I don't know what kind of language would have been in those documents that authorized the issuance of the bonds. And I don't know if the treasurers had a chance to look at those documents.
But the report back will cover all of those?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. The other issue is that, is the 9 million addressing since 2002, when we first started, achieving the funds, or is that a dollar figure that comes from a prior period of time?
The 9 million comprises bonds that were issued as early as the 1940s.
Okay, but I mean, but we started, but that's the amount of money that we've accounted for since 2002?
That's correct.
Okay, all right. And then, the most recent 400,000 that you've been able to locate people, is that the total amount that we've been able to return, or is there other bonds that we've returned above that 400,000?
This is the total that we've returned. Again, we have claims in the amount of approximately $467,000. We have returned $450-plus thousand, and the majority of the remaining 13 or so thousand are waiting for bondholders to bring in their coupons.
Okay. Now, is it our role to search down the individual bondholder, or do we go to a company, or how do we locate the people that we owe money to?
By public notification. We do not do it individually, and that may be something we want to look at in the future. Again, the problem is going to be diminished because now the bonds are registered with DTC.
So, basically, we say there's a series of bonds that were purchased, and whoever has them, contact us.
That's correct.
Okay. The other issue is that, as we first heard about this in budget and finance, our concern was is that we have a process, as you report back, that doesn't require the person to sue us to settle the lawsuit, that we try to resolve it administratively, but we were told that there were some issues and apprehensions about giving a gift to public funds, although we were trying to figure out how that, I guess, once it became a part of the general fund, giving it back became the blockage of addressing the issue. And so, I assume we worked through that, now that we understand that some of them are contracts?
We worked through that issue with city attorney, as, excuse me, Ms. Vincent indicated, she, looking to the exact language of each of the bond issuance, showed that it would not be a gift to public funds. There was a contractual obligation to pay.
Is the intent in the future that bonds will carry the bearer's name for it to make it more easier process, or how will that get resolved?
Well, unfortunately, the City of Los Angeles was one of the last to issue bearer bonds. They're really not issue it as a matter of best business practice any longer.
Okay. So, pretty well resolves itself over time?
It has.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ruhl.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti, and thank you, Ms. Hahn, for bringing this up. We were just chatting. I remember, it was probably a year or so ago, that a gentleman came to council and asked for his money back, where we had this conversation before. And I think, obviously, the city appreciates getting 9 million dollars, but I think it's not our money. It's someone else's money, and are we doing the right notification? So, what this motion would do was, you would come back to us with how you plan on, other than the Daily Journal, being able to notify people. I mean, do we do a search, for example? If the address we have is incorrect, it comes back to us, you know, not available? Are there any other ways in which we look for that information, other levels of government that we go to, to ask for a, you know, is there a new address?
Not at this time. With limited staff, it's difficult to do that. Sometimes an address correction comes back, and that makes it pretty easy. But the short answer is no, council member.
Okay, because I think that would definitely, again, other government entities, they've probably filed tax returns, and I think, with all due respect, that people would say, "Well, it's not my fault you don't have the staff time to let me know." And I think we need to figure out a system where we can, again, whether it be the federal government or the state government, have a contact person within that entity, where you could, on a regular basis, send a letter to them, asking them for that information, and then it easily come back, that it wouldn't be a cumbersome, again, how many people do we have that are under this?
I'd have to check on you, council member. We have taken a step in that direction. Within my tiny unit there, we establish, are establishing an investor relations program. And putting that information on our website, which we're developing, would be an additional, you know, way to contact people, notify people. But as I indicated before, I think probably the best way is advertisement in something like The Times, or some publication with wider distribution. One of the issues that, in contacting individuals, that we've had difficulty, when we have had the names, that we've run into disputes, where one person is saying they really owed the bearer bond, and another person is saying they owed the bond. And to avoid that kind of issue, we've just been sticking strictly to the prescribed procedure, but, you know, it's the will of this council and my direction to come back with a better process.
But that would exist, that challenge of who owns the bearer bonds, even if you had the right address, could exist regardless.
And even with registered bonds, in the case of marriage dissolution, we've had that issue come up.
Okay, but that's not where we're taking, that's not a part of this?
No.
Excuse me. I mean, how many people are, do we have each year that are impacted by this, that we are taking the money if they've not notified us?
We've only done it twice, and it was in the same year. I'd have to give-
So, the 400,000 that Ms. Hahn was able to deal with, that was only two people?
The 400,000 was approximately, I'd say, 40 people.
40 people, okay. So, and those are 40 people that otherwise would not have received their money back, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So, I'm just trying to figure out the magnitude of the individuals. If it's 50 people a year, the extra time to go to the other, is not a lot of effort?
I will report back in my report with those complete numbers.
I think what you're hearing from us is, again, in a tight budget, any money we can get is fabulous, but again, this isn't our money. And there may be a senior who does not use the Internet, who does not have any idea they're going to read a newspaper and look for that identification. I read the newspaper every day now. I don't have the bonds, but I'm not looking at those little, I'm looking at the articles. So, I think we have to go the extra mile to let some of these individuals who are impacted be able to get their money and not be able to take it. And I think it just is one of the things that people's gut reaction is, to let them have their money, if in fact it is their bonds, and that we should do everything in our power to ensure that they get their money. So, did you want to say something? Because I see, yes.
Just add one thing. I understand that we have the situation right now with respect to the bonds that have already been issued, but just so you know that in the future, the city has options in terms of whether it chooses to issue the funds or not, or follow a model similar to what the state does, which is to basically move the funds into a special account, but they're not issued. So, they-
And is that what we're, is that what is being recommended here?
Well, actually, my recommendation, as it stands right now, was to follow the Anaheim model, which is to move the funds to a special account, not publicize, not to the publication. So, anytime there's a claim, it has not been formally issued. But in that way, you know, anyone coming would have the benefit of, you know, getting their money and item. What I'm struggling with now is, is it reasonable to put some limit on there, like 20 years, 30 years, 50 years? So, there's some point certain, and that's what I need to review with city council.
I think in my, I have two seconds. I'll do it quick. But is, it's really on two levels. Is one, we should definitely put the money in that account, and two, look at ways in which we can actually notify people other than publication, even if it is in The Times and The Daily News and et cetera. I think we have to go that extra mile and look at other levels of government, because, again, these people are probably paying taxes, and we would be able to find out exactly where they are and send them some kind of correspondence. Thank you, Mr. President.
Ms. Hahn is next, for a second time, to be followed by Mr. Zine for a second time.
Thank you. I appreciate this, and it sounds like everyone was a little bit as surprised as I was when I found out how we did this. Now, 9 million, first time we did it, we've swept it in the general fund. 400,000 and change, we've given back to those that have claims. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So, the only people we're responding to are the ones that actually filed a claim with us?
That's correct.
See, I still think there's a problem. If 9 million is what we swept, and only 400,000 we've given back because people have made a claim, again, only if, for some reason, they've figured it out. I'm still wondering if we can do a better job of currently notifying whether they're bearer bonds or not. Again, we have Channel 35. Not that everybody watches Channel 35, but why not, you know, roll, you know, unclaimed property, you know, scrolling of people's names? You never know. You know, it's funny, if somebody owes us money, we figure out how to find them. I mean, if you owe a parking ticket, or, you know, IRS, I mean, we know how to find people that owe us money. We go to all lengths. But when we owe somebody else money, we're strapped by resources, and we can't figure out how to find them. I think we ought to put as much effort into trying to find people that we owe money to, that we do when people owe us money. Again, you, you know, we have ways to garnish wages, and, you know, man, if you take your car from you, put the boot on it, I mean, if you owe parking ticket money, boy, we find you. But if, when it's the other way around, that we owe people money, we can't seem to find them. I think we can do a lot better, even on that 9 million dollars. I don't think we've exhausted all of our resources. There are ways to let people know. Thank you.
Mr. Zine.
Thank you. The notification process, you know, the state of California has a website, and if there's money that's been taken out of a bank because no one claimed it for a certain period of time, there's a website that you can check with the state of California, the controller's office. Why can't we implement something for these unclaimed bombs, bonds, on the website that we have with the City of Los Angeles, and list the numbers, or the names, or whatever we have, to give additional information? If we want to copy what the state has done, they have a very effective system. You put your name in there, and you may be familiar with that, and it tells if there's any money outstanding, et cetera, how it got there, and how you claim it. We could follow that procedure, since the Internet is available to most people, at their home or at the library, in addition to coming up with something else. And the other question I have, Mr. President, if you hold on, Mr. President, push that button, please. Do we still issue coupon bonds, or is it all high-tech now?
It's all high-tech now, except for a limited number of assessment district bonds done in my office. We have all the names, and we're converting to DTC as well.
Okay, so, years past, and I remember my folks had coupon bonds. They clipped the coupon, go down and redeem it. We don't have any of that anymore. So, everything's now high-tech. But the concern I have is all of the folks that have the 9 million, or 8 million and change, that we haven't been able to give the money back. We need to somehow pursue the aggressive task of identifying and giving that money back to the people, the rightful owners. So, you may want to, since we have a website, lacity.org, we may have something in that arena where people can get noticed. And additionally, if someone listening to this or reads the paper, who do they contact, and what number do they contact? We need to put that out to the public.
Okay. For anyone who feels that they have bonds, or have bonds, or unclaimed coupons, they can contact the LA City Treasurer's Office, 213-978-1700.
978-1700. And you're also on the web, Treasurer's Office.
We're not on the web yet. We're just bringing up our website. That was one of the recommendations to address council member Hahn's increased notification.
If we pull up lacity.org, there's no LA Treasurer?
No, there's not. There's never been a Treasurer's website. We also, as you may have received our newsletter, that goes externally too. We can put a notification in our newsletter as well.
So, maybe we could arrange with IT, because under the council offices, the mayor's office, and most departments are on the web, lacity.org, so it would be appropriate, especially to give this eight-plus million dollars back to the folks that rightfully own it.
I agree.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Anybody else wishing to be heard? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on that item. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Thank you. That is approved. Mr. Weisar.
Thank you, Mr. President. Can I move to reopen item number 17? We have a number of public speakers who are here, and I was asked by council member Ed Reyes, who cherished Plum, this item came from Plum, to see if we could allow for public comment on this item.
There's no objection to reconsideration. Let's open the roll on reconsideration. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is now before us, so there's no objection to opening public comment. We do have six cards. So, we say 10 minutes?
Five minutes.
Five minutes?
Five minutes.
All right, we'll put the clock at five minutes. That means people got to speak quickly. And with that, Sonia Ransom would like to come forward, Nancy Bane, Jerry Newman, and obviously, people can consolidate their time as well, Richard Tanner, Ann Marie Brooks, and Jane Scott will be the six individuals to speak. We'll set the clock, why don't we do this? We'll set it one minute a piece, so six minutes total. There's no objection to that, okay? Please, welcome. Thank you.
I thought it was President Garcetti, council members. I thought it was six minutes each. Okay, really quickly, you have before you two projects, an all-storage project, two projects for the same site, an all-storage project and a mixed-use storage and affordable housing project. The all-storage project, basically, our request is for modification of the conditions to the mixed-use project. Because it's been incredibly difficult to finance, my client has spent over a quarter of million dollars trying to figure out the ways to make it financially feasible. The all-storage is a backup to the mixed-use project. They understand the councilman likes the mixed-use project. In writing, before the APC, the councilman said that if the project, the mixed-use project, were found to be infeasible, that he would reluctantly support the all-storage project. We need the all-storage as a backup, and we need flexibility in the conditions to make the mixed-use work. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you for your understanding with the time. Nancy Bane is our next speaker.
Good afternoon. I'm Nancy Bane. I'm the Development Manager for Extra Space Storage. And we are here before you to ask for approval of both projects, but more specifically, the all-storage project, because we initially went out and got the support of the neighborhood groups, and a couple of ladies are here to speak to that. But I think the concern that Mr. Reyes expressed is not justified. This is a sorely needed infusion of development dollars into an area that desperately needs the capital improvements. And I don't know if you can circulate these, but there's a nighttime elevation and a daytime elevations to take a look at, and I would challenge you to say that this is storage. And that was the one concern I think he had. This is a use that does not generate traffic, doesn't generate parking issues, and all the other components that we were told to try to explore heavily impact those specific things, traffic and parking. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll make sure that gets circulated. Mr. Newman? Gerald Newman?
Council President, members of the council, my name is Jerry Newman, representing Extra Space Storage. This is a matter of corporate responsibility. We certainly understand and appreciate the council member's view in this, and have supported[1757.56] We certainly understand and appreciate the councilmember's view in this and have supported him throughout the process. What we have asked for is to do exactly what he said in writing, is give us the opportunity to prove that all other alternatives cannot work, or can work, as the case may be, and do them. But if they don't work, allow us to move forward on a project that will infuse a very much-needed facility into the area. The council office has been concerned, and rightfully so, about the neighborhood and about how much storage is in his district. The reality is, is there is no more storage in CD1 than there is in any other district in this city. And in fact, there's a great need for storage in the area, as represented by a lot of the neighbors. What we are asking for is give us six months. We will not pull building permits, we will not do anything else on this item, except explore the opportunity of mixed-use. And if we find that mixed-use is infeasible, or if the CRA finds that mixed-use is infeasible, then please allow us to move forward with the all-storage facility because it is needed in this area. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Newman. Mr. Tanner? Richard Tanner?
Yes, my name's Richard Tanner. I'm the co-founder of Extra Space Storage. We are very excited if there's any way for us to do a project on this property. We're a national firm in thirty-five states. I grew up in South Pasadena and actually did business not too far from this location. We want to be a responsible citizen and good neighbor and have always tried to do that on every project, making the project something that's good for the neighborhood, where it's safe, convenient, and good for the needs that are there. There's definitely self-storage need in this neighborhood. Extra Space wants to be part of the community and provide this need for the people. We had the opportunity to meet with several of our neighbors and they're strongly in favor of that. We hope that you will consider that, as has been mentioned, to a backup to even a mixed-use, which we have explored and we're, will work in some way to make something happen at this location. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ann Marie Brooks is our next speaker, followed by Jane Scott.
Good morning, councilpersons. Ann Marie Brooks, President, Pico Union, CRA PAC Two. I'm here to report that both PAC One and PAC Two voted for the storage against the mixed-use. My personal opinion is that we'd much rather see storage in the neighborhood if it has to go the other way, since backers have not come forward for the mixed-use. I'd like to see it go market-rate mixed-use so it can succeed. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your testimony. Jane Scott is next.
Jane Scott, a neighborhood member. I'm also a member of PAC Two. As Mary Ann Marie said, we approve, the community approved the storage only. We have so much traffic, no parking, everything else in our neighborhood. This would help alleviate that problem that mixed-use would bring into the neighborhood. And then I read recently that for District Nine, their overflow is going to use Pico Union surplus parking for what parking they don't have, and folks, we don't have any surplus. CRA has found that it does not have sufficient funds, and this came out in our PAC meeting, for a mixed-use project previously proposed by Hollywood Community Housing Corporation. For thirty years, our PAC has been trying to get a mainstream, main-street concept for Pico Boulevard. Presently, our businesses consist of clothing manufacturers, ninety-nine-cent stores, liquor stores, just one more thing here, small cafes, storefront churches on every block, graffiti, gangs, and drugs. We need a better quality of life, please.
Thank you. We appreciate your testimony. Elmi Hisrich?
Good morning. I'm with the Redevelopment Agency. This isn't currently a redevelopment project, however, if we pursue a mixed-use project at this site, it is likely going to have to be a redevelopment project. I just want to go on record saying that this is similar to a project we have in Hollywood, that is, the Walgreens Mixed Use Project. It's expensive to try to accomplish the mixed-use concept. The Redevelopment Agency is committed to working through the numbers to make it work, if we can. And I want to acknowledge that Extra Space Storage has actually been engaged in this for six months, very aggressively, and actually longer than that, trying to figure out a mixed-use concept. The agency will continue to work with Extra Space Storage, but we ask that you consider amending the conditions so that there is more certainty for the developer that they can move forward with this project if it's infeasible to do the mixed-use. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That closes our public comment. Mr. Weiss and then Mr. Weisar.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise probably for the same reason that Mr. Weisar rises, just to let you know, colleagues, this is a project in District One, Mr. Reyes's district, and Mr. Reyes, Mr. Weisar, and I heard extensive discussion and testimony regarding the project at Plum. Both sides of the issue were clearly presented. Mr. Reyes has been working on this matter and his staff have been working on it for a long time. He laid out a very thoughtful, deliberate, and reasoned resolution of it. We passed that on Plum unanimously and I would urge you to follow the recommendations of Mr. Reyes and of the Plum Committee and vote for the report.
Thank you very much. Mr. Weisar?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Likewise, as Mr. Weiss stated, I too sit on Plum and this project is in Councilmember Reyes's district. He is the Chair of Plum as well. This item was heard by the committee and is recommending that we adopt the Plum Committee report. However, there's one technical change that's being requested by CD One. In every section where it states Pico Union Housing Corporation to add or another qualified nonprofit developer, this would allow some flexibility in seeking and finding a non-housing, a housing nonprofit developer. Mr. Reyes feels strongly that there, this has a potential for mixed-use and that having a single-use storage facility is not the highest and best use for this location. I ask that we adopt the Plum Committee as amended with the technical change. Thank you.
Ms. Perry?
No.
Oh, sorry. That was mistaken. Okay, anybody else wishing to be heard on this? If not, we have the recommendation again before us. If we can please open the roll on that, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number thirteen, called special by Councilmember Padilla.
Mr. Padilla, item thirteen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, or Mr. President, excuse me. Well, I was running near empty this morning, so I stopped at a gas station and it's more than three dollars a gallon now. So, I was very interested in this item. I'm wondering if there's staff here on this that can give us an overview as to the report that's before us? Is there staff here on this item? If not, can we leave this under us until we find staff?
Sure. Let's hold that on the desk until there's any staff here for this. Oh, I think we do have some folks coming forward right now. Maybe not on this item. Oh, yes, on this item, so we'll hold your time, Mr. Padilla.
Good morning. Maybe if we can begin with just a brief staff report or presentation as to what's before us and how it originated. I see it's not directly a motion or resolution authored by councilmembers, so if it's a department report, again, what prompted the report?
Ed Rose with the CIO's office. We will certainly work with the city attorney on the legal aspects of what the motion requests and outside of that, there are some initiatives that the General Services Department has undertaken over the past several years to do their best to, I guess, hedge against the spiking rise in petroleum costs. They've been purchasing widespread use of hybrid vehicles. There's a fuel automation program that's in place right now that's been budgeted for the past several years, which provides a higher level of internal control for fuel purchases and prevents shrinkage and things like that. And I guess I could defer to Angela from GSD to expand a little bit more on the market price of petroleum and whatnot.
I'm Angela Sherick with the Department of General Services. As Ed Rose said from the CIO's office, the Department of General Services has worked diligently to ensure that the city gets the best pricing for fuel. And one of the things that we do is that when we go out for bid for any fuel type, we try to ensure that we get the highest number of bidders. Also, we ask that in cases where applicable, that bidders give us a discount on the pricing. And what we've done, for instance, on unleaded fuel, we actually get a discount to the pricing. So, we're actually running about twenty to thirty cents below what you see at the pumps when you get fuel. And that's, that is because the city buys in bulk. The other things, as the CIO also pointed out, is that we use hybrid vehicles so that we can get the best mileage per gallon. There's also been some discussion about consortiums, so that we are looking at working with other cities to buy even more fuel so that we can get lower prices. So, those are some of the things that GSD has undertaken to get the best price in fuel.
Well, it seems to me that there's comments in two different areas. One is what the city can do sort of internally for our functions to lower our costs on fuel or minimize our costs on fuel as they continue to go up. The other component is what are we telling the public? What are we telling consumers about their energy consumption or ways to cut costs? Am I reading you correctly as you're about to put this report together?
Well, as far as, I guess, citywide petroleum use, I'm not sure if we've expanded our scope to include our constituents.
Well, I'm trying to understand what it is that we're about to vote on here today. So, I'm trying to, I'm trying to repeat to you what I thought I heard you say. So, if I'm wrong, please clarify.
Okay, I guess we're looking at the scope of the motion. There's a few items in there that mentions oil boycotts and things of that nature, which if the city were to undertake, we would have to, and there's some, has some potential legal implications. So, I think we were essentially gonna focus our report on what the city is doing to combat or to confront, you know, the spikes in petroleum costs and how to hedge against that or at least level of the peaks and valleys internally.
Well, just flipping through our full agenda here, I do notice that the item before us is a result of a recommendation for council action pursuant to motion Reyes-Rosendahl. I know Mr. Reyes isn't here. I'd love to hear Mr. Rosendahl speak on this item. But colleagues, when it comes to gas prices, and it does seem that they're constantly going up and going up and going up, there's also a seasonal dynamic to all this. It shouldn't come as a shocker that the closer we get to summer vacation, gas prices begin to creep up again because a lot of people do tend to hit the road for the summer break with their children and their families. But I would encourage you to really look at it, two components. The easy scope to look at is what's the city doing? Hybrid vehicles, you know, because we're such a large customer, can we leverage that to negotiate lower gas prices for ourselves, et cetera? But I think the biggest value in having this conversation is what the message is that's going out to the public. What can residents of the city of Los Angeles do to reduce their fuel costs? And it is with purchasing higher-efficiency vehicles, carpooling, taking public transportation, all those things. So, I'm eagerly awaiting your report, but one point now, colleagues, is this is a conversation that seems to happen about once a year around this time of the year. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Padilla, for highlighting this before all of us here today. It is outrageous what's happening to the price of gasoline. The fact that it's now seventy dollars a barrel, seventy dollars a barrel, will have a multiplier effect on absolutely everything in our great economy in this nation. This is not a willy-nilly thing and just gas at the pump. It is all of the derivatives that come out of oil that has its impact on the entire economy. And it's outrageous because it's price manipulation at its worst. And we've asked the city in this motion to look into it. And in talking to Bill Fujiaka, we're gonna do a friendly amendment to this motion and we're also gonna ask the following. One, can the city and the county and the cities in between all get together and do some group purchasing? So, by group purchasing, maybe we can get a better price. Secondly, but more important, we need to look at our pension funds and see what kind of investments our pension funds have in oil and gas and how that impacts the market. Look, let's face it and be honest here. If our president hadn't gone to the war in Iraq, which a lot of people thought had to do with oil, and now the insurgents keep busting the pipes and there's no oil coming from Iraq, they can't even deal with it themselves, we lose a major producer of oil in the mix of the world trade. That is also an issue. When you connect the dots is the war in Iraq. And the final answer to all of this is renewables and alternative fuels. Mr. Padilla's right, we should be going with all kinds of vehicles that are hybrids so that our reliance on gasoline becomes less. And we need to tell our automobile manufacturers that they need to do what the Japanese have done and come up with super hybrids at fifty miles a gallon so our dependency on foreign oil is completely wiped away. But this is unbelievable, seventy dollars a barrel. And I predict, if that stays at that level, you will see a recession in our great nation based on the multiplier effect of the price of oil. So, I look forward to you continuing your study on this and we will put a friendly amendment in on those two issues that I mentioned. And thank you, Mr. Padilla, for highlighting it to all of us.
Okay. If there's no objection to those two issues, that will be accepted as friendly amendments? All right. And without anybody else wishing to be heard on the price of gasoline? No? Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
All right, that is approved. Fourth with, please, on that. Next item, please.
Item number nineteen, called special by Councilmember Grohl.
Before we take that one, I believe on item thirty-seven, colleagues, there's, seems to be a consensus to continue that for one day. Is there any objection to that? Now, Mr. Smith will be here tomorrow as well. If there is no objection, we will continue item thirty-seven for one day. And back to item nineteen, Ms. Grohl.
Thank you, Mr. President. If I could ask Mr. Robertson to come forward. Colleagues, today we have an item before us on the Fifty-Fifty Sidewalk Program. As many of you know, we piloted this program in my district and then last year, we were able to go citywide. And I'd like to give Mr. Robertson just a few minutes to give us an update. I have a few questions, but to provide us kind of what has been successful this year, the amount of miles, any challenges that you've seen, et cetera, as we can consider this in budget coming up very, very soon. And hold my time, please.
Yes, good. Good morning, Mr. President and councilmembers. Bill Robertson, Bureau of Street Services. The Fifty-Fifty Sidewalk Program that was, went citywide this year, has just been a huge success. So big a success that due to the difficulties we experienced this year after almost three years of hiring freezes, we were unable to fully staff the program, that we actually had to cut the program off after six months of participation. And I certainly want to thank all those residents that bought into the program and some of those folks that are still waiting for the repairs to be completed. I thank you for your patience. But it's just huge that when you look at the fact that we did over seven-hundred-and-thirty-seven actual estimates and our buy-in percentage was averaged seventy percent across the city. No matter where you were, we were getting a minimum of seventy percent buy-in from those individuals that received the initial estimates. So, we're very appreciative of the fact that this program went citywide. It certainly doesn't solve the sidewalk problem in Los Angeles. It's just another tool that we can use and put to work to stretch our dollars in providing services to our communities.
And what was the, how much money did we allocate for this program and sidewalks in general? If you could just give that amount.
Yeah. Basically, we have two programs. We have the general-funded sidewalk program that is about fifty-two miles, about nine million dollars. And then we allocated one-point-four million dollars for the Fifty-Fifty Sidewalk Program, with the understanding that we would leverage some of our existing resources to meet the demand if it occurred. And as I stated earlier, the demand far exceeded what we had anticipated.
And there's been a lot of comments from individuals and others saying that the people who are taking advantage of this program and the Fifty-Fifty Sidewalk are only in the wealthy areas of the city. Could you respond to that? I know for my own district, that's not the case, but just talk about overall.
Yeah, and I think that was a concern of everybody during the budget hearings last year, that this may only apply to those areas where folks were wealthy. The matter of the fact is, it's just the opposite. The majority of the folks buying in are the blue-collar workers, young families just starting out, buying their first homes. It's been really surprising, when you look at the actual cost per resident or frontage, it's only averaging about twelve-hundred dollars. So, there was a lot of fear that, oh, now you're gonna have to invest five, six thousand dollars. The reality is, it was very affordable to do. Areas across the city, North Hollywood, Venice, Mar Vista, Sunland Tahunga, North Hollywood, Van Nuys, those are the folks that have really bought into the program and were very, very thankful that everybody took a very good look at the program and saw that there was benefit in it.
And if you're a council district, we saw that Daily News did a little article the other day, a big article, actually, on it. Some districts, people took advantage of it, some didn't. I'll do a shout-out to Councilmember Rosendahl, who did an excellent job in I'll do a shout-out to Councilmember Rosendahl, who did an excellent job in advertising. But if, for some reason, your district didn't take advantage of it, are you negatively impacted by that? If you're a district, you still get to keep, that money still stays in your district. It's just it doesn't go up to another level. You don't get that extra bump, so to speak.
That's correct. The advantage of the 50-50 program is the money is allocated. You can't lose any. All you can do is gain by participating.
And there's been some concerns raised that the 50-50 sidewalk program has inhibited the department from being able to do their regular sidewalk program. So, some council districts may not have been able to get sidewalk repairs. Is that related to the 50-50 program or some other issue?
No, it's primarily related to, across all my programs here, it's been a very difficult year in the fact that due to the past hiring freezes, we had no eligibility lists available once the hiring freeze was lifted. And our department is a little unique in that when we hire people or promote people, it's usually from within. So, the only time we gain employees is when we establish an eligible list, and we had to go through that whole process. I think up until the last CAO report, we were running a surplus of about $2.5 million in our salary account simply because I can't hire those people. So, it's true that we're leveraging all our resources in the Bureau for all our programs, but no single program has been prioritized where another program suffers.
Okay, so by the end of the fiscal year, will you be able to, you know, finish the sidewalk repair program? Not that, I know the 50-50 has stopped, but the sidewalk repair program?
No, that's correct. It will be completed.
It will be completed?
Yes.
And last year, when we added the 50-50 sidewalk program, we made it very clear it had to be above what the current funding was because we don't want this to, you know, supplant what we're already doing. It should be an increase. If we're asking people to participate, we want to say we're actually doing more sidewalks and not just the same level. Is that correct?
That's correct.
In the last year's budget? And something that I know I've talked to the mayor's office and others about ensuring that whatever happens in this year's budget, that that is the same?
Yes.
Okay. And just in closing, colleagues, I think it's very important that we learn from each other on the ways that have been successful, like Mr. Rosendahl, in this program. We're looking, again, at a variety of ways in which to increase the number of sidewalks that we repair. And I want to give kudos to Mr. Robertson, who has the brainchild of this idea. We just took it and ran with it, and it really has been successful. We've heard nothing but, you know, compliments from the community, other than now, which they want to have it started, and how come it's not working right now? So, we hope by July 1st that that will continue and will expand the number of sidewalks and not have to wait 85 years to get all our sidewalks repaired. Thank you very much, Ms. Roberts.
Thank you, Ms. Gruel. Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Madam President. Good morning, Bill.
Good morning.
You've heard my colleague mention my district. What did we do, the numbers? Do you have it?
Yes. We did 176 estimates in your district, and we had 137 buy-ins.
I might say this. First of all, I want to say to the constituents that I'm their servant to in the 11th district, hats off to you all for taking leadership initiative and putting your money where your mouth is and actually working with the department and getting it done. This is not the 50-50 program in any way in lieu of your basic street service work.
That's correct. This has been a, when we did the original pilot in the council district too, it was a very small pilot because we had to use existing resources. This year, we were allocated the resources to move forward with the program, although it wasn't fully funded. It at least gave us the opportunity to expand it and go citywide with it. But it is in itself a separate program.
As a separate program, it is no way taking away from our general commitment to everybody in the city to repair sidewalks, trim trees, and surface roads.
That's correct. It is not.
Okay. I want to make that clear. And I look forward to you presenting the 50-50 program again under the new budget and under the new year because frankly, it will help us fix our sidewalks. It's a problem. I know that many constituents of mine have been on the list for a long time, and it hasn't come to them yet because the list is long. If you had your druthers, how far out are we right now on sidewalk repair in the normal traditional sense?
Based on the funding that we're, the level we're currently funded at, again, if no additional sidewalk was damaged, it would take us approximately 83 years to complete.
Eighty-three years?
Eighty-three years to complete.
There's very few people watching this that will be around in 83 years, and I know my sidewalk needs repair too. My neighbors couldn't afford to get into the 50-50 program, so we never got it done. Well, our baseline in government is service to the constituents, and this is a serious part of it. So, I look forward in your budget process to say, it's not going to be 83 years for the whole list to be done, but here's what we need to do funding-wise to do it sooner. Some of my colleagues have talked about a bond measure, frankly, to actually move forward with it. They used the figure 123 years it would take. Yours is 83. It's still outrageous. So, I look forward to leadership from you saying to us, here's what we really need to do to bite the bullet. Because I believe our constituents will pay if they know their money is going right into the ability of getting those streets, getting those sidewalks, getting those trees taken care of. So, I look forward to that, Bill.
Thank you.
Okay. And again, I want to congratulate the people in the 11th district who stepped forward, stepped to the plate, and did an outstanding job. And to Andrea Epstein of my staff that actually did the outreach and the newspapers and community meetings, we let people know about it. And we look forward to sharing that marketing plan with my colleagues around the horseshoe. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Mr. Padilla.
Thank you, Madam Chair. How are you doing?
Good, good.
Good. Well, congratulations and kudos to you, to Councilmember Gruel, who launched this program. My question was along the lines of something that Mr. Rosendahl just alluded to a minute ago, which is, this 50-50 program and work and workload and funding is completely separate and apart from the city's ongoing commitment to regular sidewalk construction and repair?
Yes, that's correct.
And is it just repair work, maintenance work, or is it also new construction?
No, it's strictly repair work.
Okay, because I know at one point, in last year's budget, we had asked for a report on how to expand the 50-50 program to new sidewalk construction. Can you give me a quick status report on that?
Yeah, basically, we looked at that process.
Hold on a minute, please.
We looked at that process, and it is doable. But again, we would have to allocate additional funding to offset naturally the city's 50% cost of constructing the sidewalks. One of the major issues is, is that if you have a block that currently has no sidewalks, and you had three or four individuals that wanted to put sidewalks in, the question becomes, at what point does the city set the requirement? Do 100% of the individuals on that block need to buy into the program in order to get those sidewalks constructed? Because naturally, they would all be sharing the cost. If only three or four people bought in, and there was 12 residents, then those four or five would be sharing the majority of the cost while still the other property owner's benefit. So, there are some legal issues we need to address and how we define, where do you go forward and what you need as far as a buy-in from the residents?
And I appreciate that, but have those legal and maybe some additional policy questions been presented to the council for an answer?
No, not at this time, they have not.
When can we expect those legal or policy questions to be presented to the council for an answer?
I think it would be a good opportunity, as we talk about the 50-50 sidewalk during the upcoming budget hearings, that we could get the information and provide it at that time.
But since we're not at the budget yet, you know, what does it take for us to not just have a conversation about it, but for us to be acting upon a written report from you and/or the CAO and/or the CLA?
Well, I think the first step is just for us to get together and discuss what our legal boundaries are, what we need to do as far as the buy-in, and then naturally establishing an outreach program.
But I just think it'd be helpful on behalf of my colleagues in the council here to have that conversation, working off some sort of document that lays it out for us. So, I'd ask for an amending, let me offer an amending motion requesting that specific report of what steps we would need to take to expand the 50-50 program to include new construction in addition to just repair work.
I believe we need a second on that motion. Mr. Garcetti, a second.
The other area of my questions was, you know, one of the concerns that was raised by residents in the article that we're all referring to was, how do we know that the 50-50 work, from the department standpoint goes, whether it's financially, workforce, et cetera, isn't taken away from general city work that needs to be done? And I guess one of the areas that raised a red flag for me was, the mayor may or may not include this in the next year's budget? And if he doesn't, you'd seek to continue the 50-50 program via existing resources?
Well, what we're looking at, and that was one of the key reasons that we cut the program off in January, is realizing that the commitment by the residents and the promise the city made was, is that that work would be completed this fiscal year. So, if the program should not be continued next year, those property owners that bought into the current program will get their sidewalks completed this fiscal year. Those, we have an established waiting list should the program be funded next year. So, those people that have bought in this year, their work will be done this fiscal year.
Okay, so you'll make good on previous commitments?
Yes.
But you're not going to take any new requests?
No, not if the program...
So, is that a true continuation of the program?
Right. Depending on the, if it, depending on which option they fund as part of the budget, even if they exclude it, we can't move forward because we won't have the existing resources to do the program.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Padilla. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Madam President, and thank you, Ms. Gruel, for this program and the Bureau for its extraordinary work. It's really been a great example of, in a time of limited resources, being able to extend that and to touch more people with our city services that they so much deserve. I wanted to explore a couple areas with you. We really knocked ourselves out trying to publicize this in CD 13. We're one of the three poorest districts in the city, poorer than council districts eight and 10, which I know you talked about in the media. We put it in local papers. We had, you know, folks come out from the Bureau and talk to neighborhood councils. I spoke about it in community meetings. Our district director did our, and we got very few people on it. I think part of the suspicion that we have behind it is we have the highest percentage of renters of any district in the city. 83% of the residents that I represent are renters, and only 17% are homeowners. So, I was wondering if you had citywide breakdown in terms of single-family home versus non-single-family home in terms of the utilization? This is my first question. If you could hold my time.
I don't have the numbers in front of me, but primarily, the criteria for the program this year was, we didn't include industrial areas, commercial areas. We'd limited it primarily to residential areas, including apartment complexes. And we did have a number of apartment owners buy in to the program. But I can go back researching information and give you those actual figures.
Do you have any idea anecdotally, though? You had a few apartments, was it, you know, single-digit percentages?
Yes, yes, it was. It was very few.
And I think that's part of what we're trying to figure out to make sure that that can be leveraged. Now, you say, and I know that no resources are taken away from the existing sidewalk program to do this, but people have to be moved one place or another, and that's an imperfect science because you don't know exactly how many people are going to sign up for 50-50. I mean, you know what the max could be, but then you have to allocate your resources. And your Bureau has been very good at working with my district in making sure that we can finish our program, even though that kind of got squeezed towards the end of the year because of the success of the 50-50 program. I do have worries for all, that all council districts won't be necessarily as lucky. Can you assure me that we have the work crews to finish in this fiscal year 100% of the non-50-50 program that was there? Or do we need to help you with resources on manpower side to make sure that doesn't happen?
No, I think our full intent is to finish the full program, ensuring that each council district gets their full allocation. The difficult part is, normally where I have 11 individuals on a sidewalk crew, I'm running five and six individuals on a sidewalk crew. And it's been a struggle all year, and it's not just my sidewalk program, it's all of my programs. It's been a very difficult year in the hiring process, getting people on board.
You have authorization, but you haven't been able to hire...
Yeah, we have the authorization, and the reality is, is when you have a hiring freeze of the duration that we had, and then you turn everybody loose, all 40 departments trying to hire, a lot of positions that go across the boards, it's very difficult. Most of the eligibility lists had expired. We did a number of emergency appointments, but they only help you to a certain extent because you aren't hiring new employees, you're just promoting existing employees. So, you really aren't eliminating your vacancies.
Have you looked at city jobs program? I know that in the past, when we were doing hiring, that was something that had been looked at. I know Mr. Hernandez, I believe, has spoken about it. Ms. Butcher from CIU 347 has had an idea for youth for a long time to help supplement those crews and maybe become part of city jobs program where they could then later on become full-time and permanent employees for the city. Is that something that you've explored this year?
Well, actually, we had a program for the last several years, the vocational worker program, where we'd bring people in, and after they're serving approximately 18 months, they were transitioned into existing city positions. We have utilized that program. We use the local hiring halls, apprenticeship programs. We would certainly like to see a new program along the lines of vocational worker expanded so we could bring more entry-level employees in. Because that's where our greatest problem is, is at that level.
And I'd very much like to work with you on that. I think our workforce investment dollars and the centers that we have out there, that we still have a lot of youth in particular who come with low skills, but this would be a good entry-level job. Mr. Weston, who chairs the Housing Community Economic Development Committee and oversees those workforce investment dollars, we could maybe work together to build on some of those successes that we've had in the past with city jobs now that we're past that hiring freeze. So, let's commit to working on that together to make sure you get those people because I think that's critical. And then one last thing. Is there a prioritization of 50-50 sidewalks then over the other program? Because anecdotally, that's what I'm hearing from some different council districts in some of our experience, that that stuff goes to the top of the queue. Is that a policy? And if so, why those first?
Well, it's not actually a policy. It has become, it has become kind of a reality in the fact that on the 50-50 program, because we've only hired half of the individuals that were funded for the program, we've fallen further behind. So...
You've fallen further behind on the 50-50 or the non-50-50?
On the 50-50.
So, it doesn't necessarily take prioritization? The other stuff that's non-50-50 gets done first by the Bureau, or they just get equally?
Well, the reality is, we're doing both at the same time. But what we do is, we try as we go through the program, if one program is falling behind, which the 50-50 did because of the hiring process, we have taken some resources from all over the Bureau and tried to beef that up so we can get caught up.
See, and that's my worry. I mean, that, just to be frank, I mean, that's my worry in district where we're knocking ourselves out to get that out there because there's so few homeowners, we're not getting many people, and because it's low income, we're not getting many people. I agree, it's not just the rich areas. I think it's the middle class that's taking advantage of this. But the lower class is not. And renters, it seems, are not, at least anecdotally mine. If we take those resources away from where those people depend on getting their sidewalks fixed, it puts them further behind. If we can still do it in the year, and you can guarantee me that, great. And I think we've worked, as I said, well with your Bureau to guarantee that in my own district, but looking out for everybody's district as well, I just want to make sure that we aren't, with a great new program, scooting out some of those most in need in the old program.
No, and I'd like to ensure the council that fortunately, when we establish these programs, we have the full fiscal year to do them. Our goal historically is always to have all our programs completed 60% by January because we anticipate the rainy seasons. This year, because of the hiring freeze, and I'll use resurfacing as an example, we had an additional 100 miles to do. Have the vacancies I need to fill, but I'm still doing the same thing. So, all my programs are running behind our normal schedule. But the reality is, we plan to complete every single one of our budgeted programs by July 1st.
Okay, great, thank you. And just a last thing, can you tell people, I'm sorry, I don't have a timer, I'm probably over. Can you tell people who are interested in applying for these jobs where they should contact?
Well, actually, it's basically, they can go online. There's a number of, through the city's Personnel Department, there's a number of positions now that they're currently taking applications for. And we also post any emergency appointments through the Personnel Department so they can make themselves available through using the online process.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Mr. Zein.
Thank you, Madam President. The other measures, I remember visiting a location in the West Valley where you had some kind of a manufactured insert. They would level it, and they put the, it was like a rubberized, whatever happened with that program? Is that part of the 50-50?
It's not currently. We have done approximately, I believe, 11 pilot test sites throughout the city. We try to do a couple each year. We've had some good success with the rubberized sidewalk. It is more costly than concrete. We've had some problems with the actual color fastness of the material, some curling of the edges. So, each year, we try to do one or two pilots to test the current technology. So each year, we try to do one or two pilots to, to test the current technology and see if it is improving and where it can be used on a full-time basis. Our biggest concern now is the actual cost. It is more labor-intensive to put in than basic concrete, and again, it is more expensive than concrete.
So the 50-50 that we have is the concrete sidewalk?
Yes.
Does that include removing the roots that have encroached upon the sidewalk? That's part of the program?
Yes. The, the 50-50 sidewalk and the current sidewalk program itself include full tree maintenance. If the tree is going to remain in place, we'll do root pruning, we'll do crown reduction, and then naturally, the sidewalk repair. We also fix any adjacent sprinkler systems that have been damaged over the year by the root growth of the, of the trees. So it's very, it's all-inclusive. So when folks buy into the program at $10 a square foot and they're paying $5 a square foot, they can't beat the price.
And then one more question regarding the new construction, where we see a new building going up, whether it be commercial, residential, downtown area, where we see the commercial buildings turned into lofts, et cetera. Is there some requirement that while they're spending millions of dollars on the structure, that they repair the sidewalk? Is that part of a program that we have in place, or do we need to do something in that endeavor? Because I'm looking at new construction and dilapidated sidewalks and trying to see if we can coordinate that effort.
Usually, when a developer pulls his permits from the Bureau of Engineering, they set the criteria and the repairs that need to be made under that permit. And usually, they, they do include full improvements of the area if there are no existing improvements. They do require, in many occasions, that any sidewalk curb and gutter that may be in disrepair, it must also be repaired as part of the development. The problem is, is many times, that it's localized to that one individual spot. And a lot of times, it may only include the, the immediate front inch, it may not include the side of the, the development. So-
So we could do something in our ordinance policy, because what I find is the millions of dollars invested in the structure, et cetera, in the landscape, when I see the sidewalks that have deteriorated, I'm questioning why we haven't included that as part of that process, that the perimeter of that particular location be improved. But that doesn't currently exist.
It, it does, depending on the, the type of permit that is pulled. And really, I would, I can get with our, our partners at BOE and get an explanation for you and supply that to you.
Well, let me know if we need to do an ordinance enhancement on that, because I'd be concerned that we improve at the cost of that developer when they're already there with the concrete, when they're already there with the footings, when they're already there building the structure or renovating a structure, they have the equipment there. It doesn't seem to be a great expense to do that sidewalk, and not just one patch, but the area that needs to be improved, because some of those places are in great deterioration. So I'll work with your office on that, with my office, and maybe we can come up with an ordinance to try and include that, since we're doing a lot of construction around the city right now.
Be glad to hear that.
Thank you, Ms. Gruel.
Thank you, and thank you, colleagues. This is the meat and potatoes of our job, so I appreciate, Bill, you being here and all the interest in this program. One last question I wanted to ask you, which we talked about in the pilot and for the, last year we went citywide, was the payment plan. You know, some people cannot afford the $1,200, and whether or not they could do credit card or payments, is there any status report on that?
I, I think one of the things that we've looked at, and one of the key elements of the, the initial program this year, and the reason we carried it over strictly a cash basis this year, was to ensure that we didn't add any additional administrative costs to the program, inflate the, the cost. But certainly, I, I think if the, if the program, during the budget hearings this year, if the program is put forth again, that we ought to look at a minimum of allowing individuals to use their credit cards. At least, that's a, a sense of self-financing for them, and the city doesn't take on that burden.
Burden of that.
But I think that would be the first step. Long-term, we've checked with many of the, the other cities that are currently running shared programs. Some of them go through an assessment process, and they split the cost maybe over a five-year term. But again, that's adding additional cost to the program itself.
Great. Well, again, thank you to you and your staff for, for making this project work, and we'll look forward to the budget discussion after today, when we see how much they put in for sidewalk repair. Thank you very much, Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to be heard on this? If not, let's prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. The next item, please.
Item number 20 was called special. There is an amending motion that has been distributed.
Has that been circulated? Ms. Perry?
Yes. Thank you very much, Mr. President. This item did go through Public Works Committee and was approved with a long list of conditions. I don't, unless somebody's really interested, I won't set them forth, but the underlying owner wants the vacation in order to be consistent with the other alleys in the area, and he has no plans to develop it, and is willing to give all the land to the city. So the amending motion to remove item three under the conditions for street vacation in the committee report include alley widening, sidewalk installation, and drainage installation. And there is no opposition to this, and the staffs now in support.
Okay. Great. Anybody else wishes to be heard? Let's prepare the roll on this and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That's approved. Next item is 22. Ms. Gruel.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. And I know we have staff here, but I don't think I need you, Alan, yet unless people have questions. Colleagues, many of you may know, and Jack used to represent this area, Willacre Park, which is a, a great location, a beautiful hillside park located in my district, but is owned by the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy. And I feel very strongly that it should be accessible to everyone who wants to utilize it. It's become a very popular park if you go there early in the morning and actually all day. It's set in the hilly community of Fryman Canyon, and indeed, visitors from all over the nation come and visit that location. It's easily accessible, and you can see a beautiful view of the San Fernando Valley. But I think what I want to see and why we're proposing a preferential parking district is such a treasure should not become a nightmare for the surrounding community, which has occurred in the last year because they, Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy, developed a policy that they were charging for their parking lots. And so a majority of the people who now visit that location do not go into the parking lot. They actually park on the street. That has caused a, a public safety issue, concerns for the residents, and we are trying to figure out a balance between the rights of the homeowners and the rights of the people who walk at Fryman Canyon. Currently, they charge $3 a day for any individual who wants to park in that parking lot. I have, from day one, actually asked them to have no fee because this was an unusual facility within an urban area and within, in a residential area, and anticipated the kinds of problems that we're seeing today. But I am pleased to, to inform you that, working with the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy, they are intending to, to join me in not limiting the access to the park, and agreed to lower their parking fee from $3 a car to $1 a car if the district, this preferential parking district, is created, so that everyone hopefully can benefit from this preferential parking district and provide some needed resources for the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy. If I had my magic wand, I would say we should have no fee for that parking lot. I may still get my way someday, but this is the compromise that we've worked out, which is $1 a day, and we'll be looking forward to implement that as soon as we have this preferential parking district. So because there's been a lot of discussion, I wanted to call it special to identify our interest in preserving the neighborhood and preserving access to the park. Thank you very much, Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gruel. Nobody else wishes to be heard? Let's prepare the roll on the item and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. And I believe our next item is closed session? Is that correct?
Yes, it is, Mr. President.
In accordance with California state law, we will now go into closed session, executive session, to discuss legal matters before us. If we take any action, we will come back into open session and take a vote on that as well. So with that, we please clear the council chambers. Thank you. We're, we're back and open. Housekeeping, Madam Clerk?
Yes, council has motions for posting and referral.
Those are posted and referred?
There's an excuse on the desk. Councilmember Perry requests to be excused Friday, April 28th to leave at 12:30 for city business. That meets council policy.
Okay, Ms. Perry is excused.
And that clears the desk.
Okay. Any announcements, colleagues? Mr. Parks?
Mr. Chair, several announcements. USC is going to have their first annual, or their first multicultural festival on campus on April 28th at the McCarthy's Quad from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Anyone interested, contact the Minority Affairs Office at USC. Also, the Cancer 5K Annual Gift for Life Walkathon and Health Expo will be held, the expo will be held at Ted Watkins Park, 10:00 a.m. until 4:00 p.m. The walk will be held from 8:00 a.m. until it's completed, and it will start at Century Avenue in Western. And the 5K walk will be done on Saturday, April the 22nd. Also, the city is sponsoring a 5K walk for victims' rights. The, the mayor and the city attorney are joining forces, and this will be held in Exposition Park commemorating National Crime Victims Rights Week, which will be held April 23rd in Expo Park. And the last issue is the Black Alumni at USC is having their annual Alumni Award Scholarship Banquet, Saturday, April 29th, 6:30 in Bovard Auditorium.
Thank you. Mr. Zine?
I want to remind everyone that tomorrow is Denim Day, our annual Denim Day, so don't forget to wear denim to council. Also-
And for folks watching at home, what is the purpose of Denim Day, Mr. Zine?
Denim Day was started, I think it was in Italy, where a judge, was it Italy, right? Where a judge decided because of the attire of a lady who was raped, her attire contributed that, and since that time, groups have been formed to remind everyone that rape is a crime, a very serious crime. And since, apparently she was wearing Levis or jeans or something to that effect, Denim Day started a trend, and we do it every year here in city council where we wear some type of denim and remind people of that heinous crime. And we welcome everyone to wear denim tomorrow. It's, it's grown over the years, there's more and more awareness, I see some billboards up, but the whole focus is rape is a very serious crime, and it's not the attire that you're wearing that would give anyone a right to attack, rape a woman. So that's Denim Day. Also, for many of us who know Bob Genovici, who was in the train, the metro train, where the MetroLink, that tragedy that occurred, he is going to finally retire tomorrow, his retirement is tomorrow, at the Otani, the new Otani. And he was with the planning department for many, many, many years, so his farewell will take place tomorrow. Thank you.
Ms. Perry? Did you have announcements? Nope. Any other announcements? Colleagues, obviously, a big day today. This mayor's state of the city address will be at 5:00 p.m. today, and I know that will be carried on Channel 35, among other outlets, so tune in for that. And with that, any adjourning motions, colleagues? Do we have any adjourning motions? Yep. Please rise then for it. Ms. Hahn?
Thank you, Mr. President. Today, I'd like us to adjourn our meeting in the memory of Nancy Alice Crouch, who passed away on Easter Sunday at the age of 84. She was a longtime resident of Watts. She's survived by her children. Many of you might know Dr. Perry Crouch, who actually worked in my office when I first came on the city council, and now does gang intervention and anti-gang work in South Los Angeles. Also, by her other children, Vertizi, Mark, and Brenda. And she will be greatly missed by her family and services are planned for Northern California. I'd also like to adjourn our meeting today in the memory of Robert Arnold.
Ms. Perry will second that one.
Okay, good. Thank you. Robert Frederick Arnold also passed away on Easter Sunday, and he was surrounded by his family. He was 81 years old. Bob was a U.S. Navy veteran who served in World War II from 1942 to 1945. He enjoyed a number of interests and hobbies over the years, including piloting small planes, bartending, and working as an auto mechanic. He was a great fan of baseball and car racing, but nothing compared to the joy and happiness that he felt when he was surrounded by his large and loving family, which he created and nurtured with his beloved wife, Raji. He was preceded in death by her, and he's survived by three children, Deborah, Sheila, and Robert, six grandchildren, Eric, Yolanda, Mark, Jessica, Sarah, and Bobby, and four great-grandchildren. One of his grandchildren, Eric, is married to my Director of Communications, Courtney Chesla, and I will tell you that Courtney and Eric were very close to Eric's grandpa and spent a lot of time with him. Apparently, Courtney was cooking something that even at the end of his life, when the family felt like he was dying, that he insisted on eating something that she cooked for him. So she would go home from work after putting a full diet here and cook for him, and her husband Eric was there when he passed away Sunday. So they were very, very close to him, and it'll be a great loss. But he was lucky, I think, to have particularly Eric and Courtney, who really loved him and were close to him, particularly at the end of his life. The services will be held in the Little Country Chapel at Pierce Brothers in North Hollywood at 11:00 a.m. this Friday.
Thank you very much. Mr. Parks?
I asked us to adjourn in memory of Arthur Winston. All of us recall, we honored him at least twice in the last year or so, who passed away on April the 13th. He retired on March 21st after 76 years of service with the MTA. His retirement was covered in newscast nationwide. As you recall, he joined the Transit Agency in 1924, was then known as the Pacific Electric Railway Company. He left in 1928 and returned six years later. In the ensuing 72 years, he missed only a couple of days of work in 1988 due to the passing of his wife. Upon retirement in March, he was immediately selected as the spokesperson for the 99-cent-only stores. In 96, he received a congressional citation as the employee of the century from the former president, William Clinton. And in 97, MTA Board of Directors named the Winston Division in South Los Angeles in his honor. At the age of 100, he was still working and was responsible for a crew of 11 employees. Passed away at the age of 100 on Thursday, August, sorry, April the 13th, 2006. Funeral arrangements are pending. He survived by a great-granddaughter, a great-great-grandson, and a grand niece.
Thank you, all members on that. That was a blessing to have him in council chambers so close to when he passed. Mr. Zine?
Betty Fisher. Betty Fisher, Executive Director of Haven Hills. Was born May 2nd, 1941, in Kentucky. Betty was a resident of Thousand Oaks, lost her courageous and valiant battle with cancer after a five-year struggle with the disease. Those who knew Betty for many years realized what a tremendous loss. This is not only for Haven Hills, but for the domestic violence community as a whole. She built Haven Hills from an agency with two telephones and a desk into one of the largest and most comprehensive programs serving victims of domestic violence in the area. She served as a mentor to programs not only locally, but statewide and across the country as they began to multiply in the late '70s and '80s. Her vision, leadership, and compassion will always serve as a model for those working in the field of domestic violence. She's greatly missed by all who knew her. The board and staff of Haven Hills will honor her life, life's work by establishing the Betty Fisher Legacy Fund as part of the agency's endowment fund. Interest from the fund will be used to fulfill her vision of a strong, more stable agency. She survived by two sons, Matt and Nick. I served, a member of the Board of Directors of Haven Hills, a number of years ago, and knew Betty, a wonderful lady. She'd been to city council a number of times, always trying to have proper funding for domestic violence that we have in our city. And I also want to acknowledge that this morning, in housing and economic development, money was appropriated. They were concerned that GCP funds were not going to be reestablished, that those funds by the committee today was Councilmember Weston, Councilmember Garcetti, Garcetti, attending the meeting appropriated funds to keep Haven Hills going alive. the meeting appropriated funds to keep Haven Hills going alive. And it's ironic that tomorrow, we celebrate the Denim Day. We honor, we recognize Denim Day, and Betty is being buried today, so may Betty Fisher rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. If we can have Mr. Weston be a second on the Crouch obituary as well. Colleagues, I think a friend of many of us in these chambers also passed away, I believe, last, past Friday, Roberta Gillis, at the age of 69. She was the president, past president of the Santa Clarita Democratic Club, and a great activist, a native, excuse me, of Yugoslavia, who arrived here in 1962, and a really principled woman who stood up for the things she believed in. She was no pushover to convince her to support any political cause or individual, you really had to do your work. I had the pleasure of working very closely with her on a couple of different campaigns, most recently on Howard Dean's campaign for president. She was somebody who had an indomitable spirit, organized an area in which Democrats happened to be in a minority, and did it very courageously and bravely, and she unfortunately passed away from complications of a stroke this past weekend. And her family's asking, in lieu of flowers, that donations be given to the WIC Scholarship Fund in her memory, care of the Santa Clarita Valley Press Club, care of the Signal, 24,000, Creekside Road, Santa Clarita, 91355, with her name in the memo line. Please, Ms. Gruel.
Heard of her passing, and you're right, she was quite a, a character and one who was at every event, dressed to the T, I think always had a hat on her head, and really was someone who was committed to the Democratic Club and was an extraordinary activist, so I'd love to sign on to that and send my wishes to her family.
Thank you. Any other adjourning motions, colleagues? If not, Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you. We will next be in session tomorrow, which is Wednesday, the 19th of April, at 10:00 a.m. We look forward to seeing folks there. This meeting is adjourned.